It's a little loud.
Representing.
Totally brings out your ruddy complexion.
Very nice.
I've never used the word ruddy in a sentence before.
Okay, let's go.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're right, right in tune there. All right, if I could get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
I will second.
Motion by council member.
Wait, wait, I think.
The agenda.
Henry.
Yes.
Seconded by council member Mock. There's no discussion on this, actually, if I remember correctly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
There could be discussion on the agenda.
No, you have to make it before. It has to be part of the motion. Larry, is there no discussion on the agenda?
No, I said there could be if somebody so chose. It's not on the consent agenda, there can be no discussion unless you make a motion to remove something from the consent agenda.
It's my fault for going in the weeds. My bad. All right. Residents? Reports, no public hearings. If I could get a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 7.5, the accepting of the resignation of Natalie.
There's a motion by council member Henry.
I'll second.
Seconded by council member Monroe. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would just like to say thank you to Natalie Cobb for her years of service on the Parks Commission. A lot of our work, she's very well thought out and has done a lot of work for the 2040 Cobb Plan. So, thank you Natalie again. The city thanks you for all your hard work.
Natalie will be missed.
I agree.
Yep, she was great. I hope all goes well with her, that's for sure, because I think she's moving, isn't she?
Yep.
Got to Eden Prairie, I believe.
Yep, good luck Natalie.
Yes, good luck Natalie.
I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Natalie Cobb from the Parks Commission.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, I just, I agree with Glenn that Natalie had been on the Park and Rec Board for a while, right?
Long time, yep.
Yeah.
Long time.
Yeah, yeah, way back, way back.
And committed, I don't think.
Yeah, and always very well prepared and well spoken and a good part of the group.
Should be missed, agreed.
So we thank you.
So there's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, Ms. Cobb. Moving on to unfinished business. Mr. Merrick, new business, 9.1 utility rate study.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packet is the completed form of the utility rate study which was prepared by Abdo Iken Myers. This is one of the occasions where kind of how government processes work can be confusing to residents. For tonight, we're asking the council to adopt the findings and recommendations within the study, but the rate changes that are encapsulated within that study aren't necessarily or not being acted on. And so I know that can sound confusing or like double speak to residents, but there really is a separate processes here. So the rate study looks at future capital needs and the operations of what we really call our kind of separate businesses, which is water, sanitary sewer and stormwater. And then based on those costs, calculations are put into formulas or created formulas and kind of outcomes the rates. The second piece to that is looking at what you actually want to charge annually. You look at not just your rates, but you look at other fees and charges for a whole list of services that the city provides. For instance, campsite rentals or renting Carver Place, et cetera. And so those fees are looked at and considered in the fall of the year. You're having a public hearing on those fees on November 5th. And so that's when you'd enact either the recommendations that are within this fee or within the utility rate study, or you could, based on a whole host of reasons, say that you want to set fees at this, whether it's for water, sewer, stormwater, or any other fee within your fee schedule system. So I just wanted to point that out before I can get into the meat potatoes. But again, the city engaged Abdo to do, to unify capital needs within the three enterprise funds, perform a financial analysis of the operations, provide recommendations, and then finally a new tier system. And all this was reviewed with the city council at your June 4th work session in draft form. Just wanted to get a little bit into the operations of water treatment. And later on in the meeting, we haven't typically done this, but there's been a little bit of what I'll call chatter on Facebook related to water quality. And Brian has a really good narrative on what could be or likely be happening there. And I want, or I've asked Brian to engage the council in giving a little bit of a description on that and then being able to answer questions from the council. So we'll get into that during the communications section of the agenda. But the water process is actually fairly complex. We have separated into four pieces. The pumping piece, excuse me, the city has four wells that pull from underground aquifers. We have two in Lyons Park, one at the current well, which is next to the cemetery, and then one out by Mills Fleet Farm. We're also looking at a fifth well in the not-too-distant future. Treatment, which is a very expensive process. Our current water treatment plant is on Monhope Road, next to the original water tower. We're looking at a new treatment plant in 2020. And so that's something that the city engineer and public services director have been working on and have updated the city council at previous work sessions. Storage, Carver has two water towers which are used for storage. It really provides a lot in the way of a pressurized system for fire protection, 950,000 gallons. And then finally, distribution water to every homeowner and business through a series of underground pipes, valves, meters, and so on. And so that whole system is combined into, it gets its revenue from water fees, which are charged to developers at the time of new development. But what most residents are accustomed to is their monthly utility bill. Here you can see their rates in 2009. And the reason that we put that on there, I know that goes back nearly 10 years. The interesting piece to that is that it hasn't changed since 2010. So the current tier system and the rates associated with those tiers have stayed the same since 2010. The rate study is proposing an increase in 2019. And here you can see on the far right, the tiers moved to a first tier of 1,000 to 5,000 gallons, which is typically is going to cover the essential water use for a family. Then 5,000 to 10,000, and then 10,000 and above. We're eliminating the meter fee and absorbing that into a base fee, which collects a more consistent, or is a more consistent revenue source over the long term, which Steve O'Donnell explained in his previous presentation. A rate study comparison based on monthly water bill, and obviously no one just gets a water bill. There's functions within sanitary sewer and stormwater that are comprised within that. And kind of like every city, the city of Carver, every city has this kind of old story as it relates to water, where they're at with the development of their infrastructure. So at times, it's like in this case, you can compare to other cities. But what has been mentioned previously, and I think is important for residents to understand is, typically you'll find that cities that are on kind of the left-hand edge of this chart are cities that haven't built recent infrastructure, most likely related to water treatment. And when someone puts in a new water treatment plant, then they move kind of in essence to the back of the line. They move further to the right of that chart. And so as cities develop, and there are more users, that cost gets spread out. But again, when that infrastructure needs to be replaced, there tends to be a push towards the higher end of the system. And so that's what you see in that graph. Rate study as relates to new development charges, again, the city's been pretty conservative with its amount. At one point, the city was on the higher end as it relates to market. Here you can see that the proposed changes put us somewhat in the middle. Again, there are different stories and narratives as it relates to other cities. For example, Delano and Jordan have their own sanitary sewer plants or treatment plants. Or the cities on the top of the scale, they're tended not to be connected and are connected with the Met Council system. I believe Cologne has its own water or sewage treatment plant. But to my understanding, Cologne has made some fairly significant investments in infrastructure over the last year as it relates to water treatment. And so they have an ongoing story as it relates to costs within the city. But this is a funding source for part of the city's new water treatment plant in 2020, estimated to be about $5.5 million.
How much?
5.5 million. The rate study also contemplated sanitary sewer. Again, the city is connected to the Metropolitan Council system. All of our sewage goes to the Blue Lake facility, Shakopee. Proposed 5% increase in 2019 from 663 to 696. We do have an averaging method that, so when folks are using their water for outdoor summertime use, that's not counted toward their sanitary sewer. The average is calculated during the months of January, February, and March, and then applied throughout the remainder of the year. And then stormwater, which has actually been a really pertinent topic as it relates to the council and some future infrastructure needs. The city is working on some gate structure systems related to the levee. The council's also been involved with the Jonathan Carver Parkway Stormwater Bypass Project as relates to piping, related to the new development projects ongoing down Jonathan Carver Parkway. The rate study contemplates an increase from 899 per home to 926 per home in 2019. So this is the follow-up from the work session. But ostensibly tonight, we're asking the city council to consider adopting the findings and recommendations within the rate study. So you'll see the completed rate study. You'll also see a resident guide that was prepared for the July newsletter that was sent out with the July utility bill. And then there was also several social media posts and website posts related to the study. So I'll be happy to answer any questions the council might have at this time.
Any questions, comments?
Yes. On an average, Brian, 5,000 gallons of water per month for a household, does that include watering or is that just basic use?
It's kind of an average. A lot of times they look at about 100 gallons per person per day.
How much?
100 gallons per person per day and includes, you know, washing clothes, that sort of stuff, you know, the toilet, the bathroom, cooking, and some outside usage.
So it includes watering.
100 gallons per person per day?
That's the industry average, yes.
Wouldn't that be like 3,000 gallons per person per month?
Yeah, well, then that's what we base a lot of it on. But actually, our usage, we're seeing our per capita, outside of watering, we see a little bit less. So that's where we use the 5,000.
Okay.
The 950,000 gallons that we can store, is that a day's use? Is that a half-day's use? Depending on use, I get it.
Depends on the season. In the middle of summer, we can run 1.2 million. The winter times are.
1.2 million a day?
Yep. And then in winter, we can run 275,000 to 300,000 about.
And then the proposed sanitary sewer and water charges, 8381, is that per unit in new development?
Excuse me, can you repeat that, sorry?
In the water sanitary sewer charges, currently we're at 6881. Is that per unit in new development?
Yeah, it's a hookup charge, right?
Well, a connection charge.
Yeah.
Okay. So then the proposed is the 8381?
Yeah, so that's separated into three buckets. There's a local water access charge, a local sanitary sewer access charge. The table you see does not include the Metropolitan Council's SAC fee. So there's three fees that someone pays when they come in to develop. So the table here shows the two local fees.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Yep.
The only question I have is just a procedural. What you're asking us to vote on is that the findings in the study, we approve, and that we'll bring it to the public and approve the rates later on.
Correct. There'll be a public hearing, so again, there'll be another push to let residents know. We'll bring a draft version of the ordinance for you to see what we're going to propose for the public hearing, so you have an idea. So the rates were, we'll bring forth in the draft what the study recommends. But if the council says, hey, we want them lower, hey, we want them higher, hey, we want a different fee for this, that process will bear that out.
Perfect.
And that'll be in November?
Correct, November 5th. What we're really asking for you tonight is if there is something that you didn't think was calculated correctly, an area within the study that was omitted, or an area that you wanted Abdo to go back and say, you know what, we don't understand your methodology. We like these factors to be considered. Then we'd go back and work through that and come back with a response related to that. So what we're asking the council to do tonight is accept the work that Abdo has done related to the study.
Perfect. I'd entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the utility rate study as prepared by Abdo Iken Myers.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Mock and seconded by, sorry, council member Monroe, I saw you out of the corner of my eye.
No, I was looking at the same.
Sorry, sorry. And seconded by council member Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now moving on to keep after it. Broadway City Hall project. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you.
We got Jersey barriers up.
Right.
Get there!
All right, thank you. The city council rejected the bid for the HVAC work sculpt for the Broadway City Hall project at your May 21st meeting. The remainder of the work sculpts were approved at that same meeting. And as you recall, you directed Wold and Kraus Anderson to rebid the HVAC work sculpt. The redesign involved a change from the boiler system to a gas-fired forced air system. Bids for that rebid were opened on June 28th of this year with a low bid coming from General Sheet Metal. Kraus Anderson has provided a bid recommendation letter. As noted in their bid recommendation letter, they did inadvertently omit the food service equipment work from their original bid recommendation letter. And so that has been, or since it's been corrected and added to the resolution for your consideration. There's also been a solicitation for special inspections work, which relates to concrete, steel, and other site condition inspections. Braun InterTech was the low for that at a cost not to exceed 44,000. As you might also recall, at the last city council meeting, the city sold bonds for the related improvement project and a bid premium was collected in the amount of $192,685. The project budget was amended to reflect that bond premium. $15,000 was added to the special inspections budget, 25,000 to technology. The remaining 36,000 was added to create a owner's contingency, which means in essence, the city's contingency. And at the end of the day, what that does is eliminates prior consideration that the council had related to using water and sewer funds as a means to fund the project. If you recall, the long-term financial plan had $150,000 contribution from both water and sanitary sewer to fund a future city hall project. And that was at one point contemplated, not agreed to, but contemplated by the city council. So also in your packet is a revised budget that includes those items that I just noted. So happy to answer any questions.
It's good news.
The council might has.
Good news.
Or have.
Have. Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 130-18, awarding the bids for the Broadway City Hall project.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Henry and now seconded by council member Mock. Any discussion? Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I will make a motion to authorize Braun InterTech to conduct special inspections for the Broadway City Hall project for a cost not to exceed 44,000.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Henry and seconded by council member Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That was easy. Mr. Buddy, stormwater project, 2017 improvement project.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're welcome.
Before you is a proposed change order number four to be added to the 2017 street improvement project. Staff had previously identified a section on Third Street to have some drainage concerns. And some of those concerns were that it just has a rather large drainage area. Portions of the roadway are really steep and the cross slope drains across the entire roadway. All of those things combined together started impacting at the end of the driveway of, or just upstream of the driveway at 201 Third Street. It was causing sediment to kind of fall out of the stormwater and accumulate on the street. And then also, that resident has a very flat driveway, which there is some risk to potential flooding and larger storm events where their garage could flood from water that's draining down the street. And so the situation creates some continual nuisance conditions for the resident and long-term maintenance issues for the city. What is proposed is to add a catch basin upstream of the driveway. So looking at the figure, the one just to the left of the driveway is uphill. That will help collect some of the stormwater and some of the sediment that's gathering there. And then we would run storm sewer pipe to the existing infrastructure that's at the corner of Third Street and Jorgensen. The staff had directed a former city engineer, which was Stan Tech, to correct this condition. But it was not included in the plan set. And so the city would still like to resolve these issues prior to finishing out the job and placing the Batumis wearing course. So now would be the time to do that because wearing course will be going on sometime this summer yet. So we received a quote from GMH to complete the work, and that was for $31,276.50. And the work would be paid for through the stormwater fund. But the city has also requested that Stan Tech compensate the city for the cost of the work.
What was that last sentence?
So we've requested that. That's why I was going to get after that.
Yeah, the city has requested that Stan Tech compensate the city for the work. But I don't know that we've come to an agreement with them on that yet.
We're not quite there yet, are we?
Dan Boyham acknowledged the city's request, but we're making arrangements for a call. But there haven't been any discussions related to it between the city and Stan Tech.
Okay. Will Mr. Harris be a part of that conversation?
Not the initial one.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to get it clear.
Get educated.
Go, please.
I just want to get it clear in my head. The engineered plans were incorrect or the engineered plans were not followed?
I would say neither, so.
Neither?
Our perspective, the city's perspective is that during the walking open houses that we do, this issue was brought up to the city engineer's office. There have been numerous occasions where this issue, this drainage issue has caused a disruption to the homeowner.
Oh yeah, I'm very well aware of it.
To the homeowner and neighborhood. And so as a part of the project, we directed the city engineer, the council, to correct it. We've also made notes to the homeowner directly impacted that if the city engineer's design doesn't correct it, that we'll fix it. And the city's position is that the city engineer's design for this is inadequate. And so the city shouldn't be compelled to pay another engineering firm and a contractor to put in a drainage system that accommodates the water that's going through that system.
Doing very well legally.
Is that correct, council?
Well, you're not blaming, and I appreciate that. It's, I think that's the best summation is that we don't feel that another engineering firm should have to pay for what we considered someone else's fault.
Okay, and then are there two additional catch basins going to be put in?
Yeah, there's a total of three that are being put in.
Oh, three are going to be put in. Is there any catch basin along there at all?
Along that stretch of Third Street, no, there is not. There is stuff right at the intersection of Third and Jorgensen, but that's the closest ones I collect.
And I just have one more question. As far as the water flow, is it mostly coming from the west or does it also come from the east to inundate that property?
It all comes from the west.
It all comes from the west. Interesting.
I would just like to comment that I'm glad and happy to finally see some type of solution to this because I have been called over to that house during rain events and seen it firsthand, and it is a problem. So I'm very happy to see that there's finally a solution coming around.
Okay, thank you. All my questions are answered.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy Monroe.
No, that's okay.
Oh.
I wasn't saying it to you, I was saying it to them.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize change order number four be added to the 2017 street improvement project in the amount of $31,276.50.
I'll second.
A motion by council member Monroe and seconded by council member Mock. Any further discussion? I just have one quick request, and that we make sure that we keep Mr. Harris in the loop on this so that we're doing things the way that we should because I totally agree that we should request that Stan Tech pay it. Any further discussion? Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Stick with it, Buddy. 9.4 Ironwood Park pedestrian bridges acquisition.
All right.
It's fun.
This is fun. The city council previously had approved plans and specs for the Ironwood Park pedestrian bridges. But once we got the direction from the council, we looked back at the schedule and kind of confirmed some of the lead times associated with fabricating the structures. And now those have extended out a little more than we had anticipated. Right now, the lead time is three to four months from when the bridge is approved before it could get delivered to the site. And so with those schedules, we realized that it was going to be nearly impossible to finish, substantially complete the project before winter frees up because there would be some concrete work and paving work that has to be done once the bridges are set. And so to help expedite the schedule, staff was proposing that the city purchase the bridges ahead of time and have them available to the contractor to set. And then we would still bid out some of the civil site work from contractors so that they would do the remaining site work, set the bridge. And this should help expedite the schedule and hopefully allow for it to be completed yet this fall. So we received two quotes from two steel bridge suppliers. Contech provided a quote for $74,890. And Wheeler provided a quote for $80,200. And the project would be funded through the park dedication funds. So our recommendation is to approve the quote from Contech and continue with quoting out the work for the remaining site improvements.
Okay, so I think we're going to have some questions. I have one question, I have two questions. First question is, are both these bridges the quotes on the exact same bridge? Are they different bridges or are they the same bridge?
They are exactly, they are exactly the same bridge requirements. So.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
The loading, the width, there may be slight subtleties.
They fit our parameters. Second question is, where are we going to store these bad boys?
Everything would timeout so that the site contractor would. The, everything would timeout so that the site contractor would finish all the work and they would be ready for these bridges to be lifted off of the truck right onto their abutments and then they would finish up the remaining site.
So we don't need to store them, they'll be delivered when we need them?
We shouldn't have to, assuming everything kind of comes together.
Do we have a backup storage plan just in case? Because if we shouldn't have to, we might have to.
I would have to talk with some staff.
We'll get there. All right. Third question. Why do we need a bridge that holds 8,000 pounds?
The city would have to do snow removal and typically, and likely run lawnmowers across it. So some of those bigger pieces of equipment. That's even on the low end. Like, that's the lowest minimum.
Wonderful answer. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Questions, comments on bridges and abutments? Just had to say that.
I'll make a motion to authorize a purchase of two steel bridges from Contech for $74,890 for Ironwood Park Pedestrian Bridge Project.
It's a motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? Good work, by the way. There's a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Find a storage place. Smithick, you've been sitting there so quietly, so patiently. Let's get on to Meridian Fields Zoning.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, tonight.
You're welcome. Do you guys all go to class to learn to say, "Thank you, Mayor and," okay. It's like in Civics 101.
Only Andrew went, nobody else is nodding.
Tonight, the request before you is to review the rezoning request for Meridian Fields. So we're starting to get to know this project pretty well. It's the 83 unit proposed project by D.R. Horton south of Highway 212, west of Jonathan Carver Parkway, was previously in for preliminary plat at the July 2 meeting. Here's an infographic about where we are in the process. So through concept plan, through preliminary plat, annexation has been approved. And we were waiting on the comprehensive plan amendment to be approved by the Met Council. It came in the day after the council meeting, of course, but it is in and it is approved so we can move forward with the rezoning now since it will be consistent with the 2030 comprehensive plan. So some detail about the request. The project is proposed to come in under straight zoning, so not using a planned residential development, which is pretty typical for development in Carver, the PRD. So the proposed project is meeting the R2 zoning district. You'll see along the bottom, the information from the city code and then the information for Meridian Fields. So you'll see it checks all the boxes for lot area, the width, front yard setback, rear setback, and side yard setback. So this will come in under straight zoning, which is not super typical for previous development in Carver. So again, the request before you tonight is to rezone Meridian Fields from AG, which is the default zoning when a property gets annexed into the city, to R2 to allow for development of D.R. Horton's 83 single-family homes.
Before we make a motion, anybody have any questions or comments? I just need one little bit of explanation. You said that, so we're getting to know this project pretty well? Is that because they're on a fast track and they want to move quickly? Why are we getting to know it well?
I think that this one has been broken out a little differently than I would generally bring through. I would like to have preliminary plat and rezoning run simultaneously. So this one is kind of a bonus on the agenda, you could say. So typically, I would run those two processes together, but because of the comprehensive plan amendment being a bit off on my internal timeline that no one else knows, this one had to come at a second meeting.
Thank you.
I can see it, it's written all over your face. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 13-2018, rezoning Meridian Fields from AG to R2.
It's a motion by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Merrick, good news, number six, sorry, 9.6.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor and Counsel. So this is an exciting project for the city of Carver and the community. On the screen is a preliminary site plan that's been provided by Lakeview Industries. You'll see it's just north of Levi Griffin Road. To get your bearings, where Lakeview Industries is written on the screen, that's the entrance into Mills Fleet Farm, the corner of Dewalter Road and Levi Griffin in the southwest section is the Mills Gas Mart. And then as you go right off the screen is Jonathan Carver Parkway. The city received a preliminary site plan for 143,000 square feet of industrial development project from Lakeview Industries. The primary use of the property would be for Lakeview's manufacturing and office operations. Lakeview manufactures and fabricates flexible components, including gaskets, die cuts, molded rubber parts, extrusions, and weather stripping among many other offerings.
Did you just say extrusions?
Extrusions.
Okay.
I don't get to say extrusions a lot, so I really wanted to nail it.
Abutment.
And you nailed it.
The mayor and Aaron and I had an opportunity to meet and tour the facility and it is, and I'm not just saying this, but it's pretty amazing. It's, it almost makes your head hurt thinking about all the parks that go into the products that we use every day and they're involved with many of those products and make, frankly, products work better. Based on initial estimates, Lakeview is anticipating they will employ 85 people in the new Carver facility and contingent upon the necessary approvals. The current project schedule, which is included in your packet, indicates a spring/summer facility opening in 2019. What we're asking the council to do tonight is simply schedule a public hearing for the consideration of a tax increment district. The council's not being asked to provide any corresponding development or financing approval. A major component of this project, as you can see on the site plan, is the extension of Dewalter Road going north from Levi Griffin Road. The council previously, or previously granted Bolton make the ability to move forward with a feasibility study, which is being prepared. We're estimating the project cost for that is around 1.9 million, which at least in the preliminary stage would be paid through, through a combination of tax increment financing. But the city is also applying to the state of Minnesota for infrastructure grant funds. And so this project is in its early form as far as trying to figure out the financing and the real kind of physical improvements that are gonna be needed. And so right now, Springstead, the city engineer, city planner, city attorney, and the city's bond counsel are really, we're all working together on trying to kind of figure out the dynamics of this project. We've scheduled a meeting for later on this week. We received the materials from Lakeview last week. And so there are quite a few moving pieces and parts to this that we are going to be working to assemble for you so that when you get to the stage where you need to determine whether or not tax increment financing is a fit, you'll have the information. But there's also two other buckets related to the planning and zoning that Aaron will be taking on as a separate piece. And then the actual physical construction of the extension of Dewalter Road that, or not Adam, Andrew.
Adam.
Adam. I'll never hear the end of that, by the way. But, and then finally, the financial piece as it relates to Springstead. So we'll take our time, we'll try to be as responsive as we can be to council questions and concerns. This isn't a typical project. We've in the past, at least recently, have been focused on residential. We have an opportunity to work on an industrial project, diversify tax base, adds jobs, et cetera. And so with that will come some different questions from residents, adjacent business owners, et cetera. Again, tonight, there's a resolution that was prepared by Mary Ippe with Briggs &amp; Morgan calling for the public hearing on September 4th at 7:00 PM to consider the establishment of a tax increment financing district and adoption of a tax increment financing plan. But there'll also be, as we go through this process, various other information that's gathered and collected and then distributed to the council planning commission, et cetera. So I know that's a lot of information. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments from the council? I have two comments. Number one, I love that this is getting on the agenda because there is no obvious, no more obvious reason for TIF. I mean, but for, they aren't coming. And that's a perfect reason. The other thing that I wanted to do is I got an opportunity to see Brent and Aaron both walking through the process of getting to the meeting with Lakeview Industries and then also the meeting with Lakeview Industries and the tour. And I'll tell you, we are in really good hands watching those two work with an avenue. Lakeview Industries didn't have to come here and I really truly believe that they came. Yes, it's a great opportunity, we have a great place to be, but working with Brent and Aaron, I think were a really huge part of why Lakeview chose to come here. And absolutely want to say thank you for the work that you did with that. It was impressive to watch.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 131-18, calling for a public hearing on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, at 7:00 PM related to the establishment of a tax increment financing district and adoption of a tax increment financing plan.
It's a motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion?
Yes. How far are we planning on extending Dewalter Road down?
So the current plan is to extend it all the way to the north property line of the property to the east of this site. So just off the end of the map.
So what?
Just off the end of the site plan, as you see there. It's about 600 feet, Andrew, Adam.
About 950 feet is the length.
Thanks, Angus.
So there'll be enough road there for their future building as well?
Bingo. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angus.
I just wanted to, this is great, this is super exciting to have these folks interested in coming to Carver. I understand that this is a really aggressive timeline and I, to echo Mike's sentiments, have been impressed with both Brent and Aaron's work of trying to make sure that everybody's accommodated and everything can move through this process as smoothly as possible. So thank you both.
Wow. Going overboard.
Good job.
Yeah, you guys, you deserve.
I do have to say that on Aaron's first day, that was the first meeting that we had from Lakeview. So it's kind of a good luck charm in that regard.
All right.
Jumped right in. Jumped right in.
All right, we do have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion concerning this public hearing? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Monroe.
I went to the Carver Fire Relief Softball Tournament this weekend.
So did I.
It's very entertaining. Some people in the council actually played softball.
Not real well, but yes.
It was actually a very nice event and I want to thank the fire department for their hard work putting it on. That's all I got.
Johnson?
In keeping with the theme of the fire department, last Wednesday night, the fire department did a live burn on a home that was donated. And on one of the hottest nights this summer, the fire department on their Facebook page posted a lot of pictures. And there's always the smiling firefighters with their raging inferno behind them, which is one of my favorite pictures when they're doing a controlled burn like that. But it's just kind of really cool to have been able to, from afar, have seen not only their dedication and their willingness to be out there when the conditions were less than ideal, but just the process and everything that went into that.
How many masks? We're melted. Anybody know?
None this time.
Really?
And they had a blast.
Wow, that's good.
They still love doing it even when it's like that. It's fun. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Mock?
Well, I want to second Cindy Monroe's comments. The Carver Relief, or Fire Relief Tournament was lots of fun. I thank them all for volunteering their time and they're always pleasant and happy and having a good time. So it was really, it was really great. A couple other things. We did not have an HPC meeting this month. The Carver County Leaders Meeting is on July 24th. I am unfortunately not able to make it. Is there any?
I'd be happy to go. Would you? Yep, I'm pretty familiar with that.
Yeah, well, will they have you?
They're always happy to see me.
Who's "they"?
Thank you, Cindy.
The other members. Well, unless somebody else wants to. I didn't mean to just.
Just hork it.
You seemed excited.
I am. I can't wait to see them all again.
We don't want to rain on.
I wanted to go, but.
I love, I love meetings at 7:30 in the morning.
Courtney did want to go.
That's all I have.
And nothing else? Henry?
We did not have a Parks Commission meeting this month, but instead Brian Schoepf, Parks, the Service Director, and Aaron and Courtney and I went to the Cheese Cave, did a little tour of the Cheese Cave and showed them Woodstock so they have a little bit better grip of the landscape.
That's all I got.
I had a bear in my yard.
Mr. Merrick, yeah, you know what? I got all these text messages about a bear. I'm playing golf in Duluth with a bunch of guys and I said, "What would you guys do if you saw a black bear right now?" And they'd go, and they all went, "There's a black bear." We freaked out. It's kind of interesting.
Well, it's a little different when it's in your yard.
A little odd for us.
And you don't live up north and you're not expecting it.
So, Mr. Merrick, anything?
Yeah, I actually have several things to review with the council. I'm gonna start off by asking Adam, or Andrew, excuse me, if the council noticed there's some construction or pre-construction signs on County Road 11. So I asked Andrew just to give the council a little bit of a summary of what's happening and what can be expected over the next few weeks.
Good move.
So about over the next month, you'll see various impacts along there. This is just an overview figure. On July 23rd, which is next Monday, is when they're starting to do some of the work. So they'll be closing the northbound lane, or the outside northbound lane going up the hill just north of Sixth Street. That's the first week that they're gonna have an impact. Then the next week, they're gonna jump up to White Pine Way and they're gonna close that entire intersection in and out of White Pine Way so that they can make a water main connection up there. And then the following week, which would be around August 6th, and will last, according to the contractor, about 11 days. They're gonna be constructing the right and left turn lanes, which will allow traffic to go west in and out of the future extension of White Pine Way.
Coolio.
Yeah, so stuff will be starting to take shape here in the next couple of weeks. So please be aware of the cones, please respect the safety of all of the workers that are out there and just be patient because it will get better once it's all done.
Awesome.
Is that closure, I'm sorry, of the acceleration lane going up the hill? Is that, did you say that's just gonna be a week?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Weather dependent.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say weather dependent because rain days back everything up.
Always looking for an out. Hopefully, we don't need to store the bridges. Probably won't need to.
So as it relates to the city's Stormwater Project or the Stormwater Lift Station Project, there's an item that's gonna be going to the HPC over the next few weeks. And I asked Brian to give the council a little bit of a preview of what that is.
So what you got in front of you is pictures actually of the trestle bridge going into Riverside Park. So if you remember, we rejected the bids on the Stormwater Lift Station. One of the changes we're looking at doing is actually relocating that Stormwater Lift Station up on top of the levee. In doing so, is through some of that construction, is we are gonna have to remove the approach to the trestle on the north side. One of the things we kind of kicked around was whether or not we put it back in and/or remove the other side. So really looking for feedback on kind of thoughts and what that looks like. So Bolton may kind of put a rendering together here for you to kind of give you just kind of what that visual is gonna be without it. Some of the things from the public services standpoint is we're able to grade those slopes a little bit better. So as you can kind of see now, it's kind of hard to mow underneath that trestle area. Even in the pictures, you can see that taller grass, a lot of that sandwork. We'll be able to regrade some of that so some of it'll be a little bit more mowable as we go forward without those approaches. The other part is the safety, you know, even on the news with the flood we had, they had it on the news and people were walking across that trestle in the background. So it's kind of funny. So we do have a gated right now, or got gates up there trying to keep people off it. But it is something that everybody kind of does, so. Answer any questions or any feedback you guys might have on how that looks?
I like it without. Safer too. You watch people walk across there. Liability. Plus to that, otherwise it's easiest for you guys.
Maybe we'll take the whole dang thing down because it looks stupid without rail on either side. I mean, it's like somebody plopped down.
I'm cool with that.
With the angle that's on the left-hand side of the picture, I guess the historic on that word side, so there's a really steep angle right there and you said you're going to be doing some grading because right now you would still have to hand walk through that area in order to maintain it.
Correct. So initially, part of this project, a lot of that shaping, we'll try to do some of it because there's just a lot of rock in there. There is only so much we can do there. There is, once upon a time, they did sheet piling on that side to help hold that, so we'll have to be mindful of that. So there'll be some shaping. Right now, we can't even get underneath the trestle area or that approach, at least now we'd be able to maintain that even by hand.
So if you add fill in there, is that going to put more load on that pier and possibly push it out of place? Or tip it? I'm, I'm asking questions because I, I'm not sold on either one of these, I'd like to know the answer.
We, our anticipation wouldn't be to fill anymore against those piers, would be actually to try to cut away from it and try to slope it back.
Okay.
You good, Hershey?
I am.
I think my preference is to keep the approaches in there. I think it gives more of an idea of what that bridge actually used to be in context. I think it looks nicer. The way it looks in this picture now, that area is not maintained, it looks a little bit more natural, more wild area. Is there an issue with keeping it like that?
No, there's not. It's just, if we don't at least keep it somewhat cut, it gets kind of overgrown and it gets really wild. The entrance doesn't look quite as groomed, but if we want a natural look, that's by all means we can kind of maintain it that way as well.
Or you could just weed whack where you can't get with the mower. I mean, you don't have to weed whack it all the way down, but just groom it up a little bit.
With wildflowers or something to?
Definitely.
Yeah, you could do that.
Could we put in some cactus?
No.
I don't have a horse in this race. Whatever's easiest for you.
If it cleans it up and makes it more safe for pedestrians not to go on it, I think it, I think, I'm okay with the, taking out the, the trestle the way it is.
I would prefer that it stays.
I think you got three for stay, two for not. I think that kind of leaves it up to you since it's not on the agenda.
When will it be coming to HPC? The night, the August meeting?
August thirteenth, I think, is the next slated meeting is when we'd be, when we would have it on that agenda.
Okay.
Hey, tell us about water too.
Ready for the water?
Yeah. Did I, did I jump?
No, no, you're good. The, there've been a number of questions and comments, I wouldn't even say question.
On Facebook.
On Facebook, there've been a number of comments on, on Carver Life Facebook page. It's something that I monitor from time to time related to yellow water or rusty water and we've really been advocating for folks to contact the city related to water concerns because then we can track them, understand what the condition is. My experience, based on interactions with Brian, a lot of it really, that relates to water softener and maintenance of a water softener and so there was another kind of round of those comments and Brian had some interesting thoughts to share on that, so I asked him to share those with the council and then we'll be working on a kind of a more comprehensive mess, message that we can blast out in the city's Facebook page and website and probably has like a little article in the city's newsletter that goes in the utility bill, but with that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
I guess, you know, a lot of it does stem back to water softeners and what we're figuring out or finding out as we go to the homes to see what's going on, is that a lot of our houses are pushing that ten, fifteen, twenty-year age right now and a lot of the appliances, including the water softeners, are starting to wear out. A lot of times you'll see the rusty or even a red color, a lot of times it's in your sinks or bathtub or even in the toilet on occasion, is actually the resin from the water softeners. So what happens is there's a baffle between where the resin is and where the water flows through and what happens is that breaks down over time. That resin actually gets carried all the way out into your tub or your sink and at first glance, or when you see it, it looks, it does look scary, but what it really is is that resin. So one of the things we do is we get these phone calls now is we ask the homeowners to try bypassing their water softener or if they're recognizing and seeing it, grab a sample right away or run the water outside. Most houses, their soft water does not go to their outside faucets, so if they're recognizing or seeing it in the house, go outside, open up the outside water faucet is a quick, easy way to see it.
So if they, if it's clear on the outside faucet, it's not a city water issue, it's a potentially an appliance inside the house issue? If it is red and cloudy on the outside, then call City Hall.
Right, and, and again, we want to know about it. If we're having an issue or a problem somewhere, we do want to know about it, but we monitor every day what leaves our water plant and we're not seeing evidence that we should be getting calls like that, so we're starting to see it. The other side with the hills that we have, the other thing we're noticing is pressure reducing valves in a lot of the homes. People actually have no water pressure, low water pressure, and again, we're pushing that age of these houses that those are starting to fail. When they fail, they fail closed. So it's not like you get huge water spikes, you'll end up with no water. So they actually start kind of turning the valve down and eliminating water in their house. So we're noticing it in social media, we're actually seeing an increase of phone calls too and it's just kind of where our town is right now, it's the age. You know, kind of had that big push and those houses are all getting to that age right now, so. But if you do, if anybody talks to you or calls you, have them grab a sample, have them call us immediately, we'll come up and take a look at it.
How many calls do you get on this?
We probably get a couple a week. You know, we're kind of trying to field them. Unfortunately, there's a lot more on social media that we don't get a chance to talk to and those are the ones we'd like to get ahold of and make sure we get the message out to call us and we want to find out if there's a problem or issue, we want to know about it. And what we're seeing come out of our water plant is not what we're seeing, they're seeing on social media, so we just want to kind of take care of that.
And the number people should call if they?
Just call City Hall, that five three.
Four four eight, five three, five three.
Correct.
Nine five two. I always find it funny that we're a four four eight number.
Thank you.
Not funny, haha, funny. Anything else, Mr. Merrick? You have, you said you had a number of things.
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Schoop.
I have actually four more things.
Oh, okay.
So as relates to the 2019 street project or improvement project, you may recall, we went out and did a walking open house with those folks. We want to try something a little different. Typically, we've had that and then they've been invited to the feasibility study presentation. What we'd like to do is Andrew's team is working on assembling basically meeting notes to kind of memorialize what we heard. So if they said they wanted sidewalks or they were concerned about this drainage issue, that, that'll be indexed and presented in a very kind of readable, user-friendly way and mailed to the residents in the project area. And then we'd, what we'd like to have, kind of similar to the City Hall piece, is a listening session, so invite them to the August sixth council meeting and have them either affirm what's on there or tell the council something that was missed. It's not meant for the council to really debate, it's just for you to listen and say, okay, we hear you, so that way when we actually get to the public hearing, it's not the first time that you're having the interaction with the residents. If there's new information that's presented, then Andrew can include that in his feasibility study and we're hoping that this can be a more collaborative approach to our public hearing and assessment process rather than kind of a traditional notice and here's the information and you have to decide right now, tonight, how you feel about it. And so it's kind of more of a ongoing discussion, so we'll get you a draft of that sheet before it goes out, but that's what we're anticipating for your August sixth meeting. Brian, Andrew and I met with Karen Weemery from Mead and Hunt as it relates to the certified levy, went through a bunch of the questions that the council requested be asked and so she's going to work on a refinement of that piece. The interesting thing that I think is noteworthy that we'll bring up is, you know, she's worked on a number of certified levy projects and we asked her as a group, you know, is there one project that you've brought from cradle to grave as far as like you started the certification process and now it's certified and she doesn't have any? And so I think that's a little bit ominous, doesn't mean that we shouldn't embark on it, but I think it frames kind of what direction council may want to give to staff as far as like timelines and connecting with our local legislators to make sure that, it seems like the FEMA connection as far as like getting them to review and certify it can be a three, a three to four year process, which seems like a very long time for someone to review a plan. So we'll, we want to be strategic about that, but I wanted to let you know that.
Well, I'd be curious as well that I'll find out of all the organizations that they've worked with trying to take this from infancy to birth. It's the wrong way, birth to infancy.
Conception to birth.
Thank you. What they've, what they've built.
Yeah.
Well, it might also be interesting to ask, of all the organizations you've worked with, whether, whether or not you were obviously, okay, if they weren't there for the whole thing, how many of those organizations that you worked with actually got a certified levy?
Right, I, I think one of the interesting dynamics is, so the communities that Karen's worked with, their concern was more toward flood protection, actually like they had a concern about the physical nature of it and so the actual insurance safety issue hasn't been a, a top goal for that community, so I don't think they've pushed it as hard as maybe the council would like us to push it when we get into our situation and so the dynamics might be a little bit different with our situation, so I think we're in line for a pretty good discussion as it relates to that and some of the information that the council's been looking for and so we can put you in a position where you can provide us some direction. Erin and I met with the superintendent and some district staff today to go over all the development projects in the city. Erin did a great job with that, kind of going over residential, retail, industrial development projects. The district is working on a demographic study that I think is going to be released sometime this fall, that'll kind of let, let the community, Carver and all the other cities in the district under, or have them understand what the future needs of the district may or may not be.
When you refer to the district, is that the school district?
Correct. And then last but not least, we're having a resident advocate group session on Wednesday. Erin's going to be kind of our keynote speaker, talking about development projects and the comprehensive plan. We're meeting at a cup of Carver and as tradition has it, we typically have at least one council member join us for those festivities, so if there's any volunteers, there's an ice cream social as a part of it, so.
I might be free.
What time is it?
Six thirty this Wednesday.
Six thirty PM?
We have Lions meeting.
Yes, I know.
I think I can do it.
I thought maybe we'd have a six thirty AM ice cream social.
What's wrong with eating ice cream at six thirty AM?
There, there is nothing.
To me, that's like.
Perfect. Nothing wrong.
Summertime.
So Courtney?
Yep.
Have your ice cream.
No, I will.
Thank you for allowing me the time, that's all I have.
That's it? Smithex, anything? Brian? Mr. Harris?
I have one thing and I wanted to make an announcement that I'd spoken with most of the people here. Larry, I apologize that I didn't get a chance to talk to you prior to this. You deserved the heads up, but I have decided not to run for reelection this year, so this seat will be open in November. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second.
Seconded by Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.